All right, so I call the October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two Stanton City Council Work Session Meeting to Order, the first item. On October twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two, I received a request from Councilor Doll to participate remotely in the October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two Stanton City Council meeting due to a temporary medical condition that prevents her physical attendance at the meeting. I will now entertain a motion to allow Councilor Doll's remote participation in this meeting pursuant to Stanton City Council Procedural Memorandum Number Three.
Mayor Eubanks.
Councilor Holmes?
I move to allow Councilor Doll to remotely participate in the October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two City Council meeting due to a temporary medical condition.
All right, there's a motion on the floor, is there a second? All right, we have a second by Vice Mayor Robertson. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Can you please call the roll, Morgan?
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Did we need to?
No, 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 I was advised by Mr. Blair to.
Hi.
Mr. Holmes?
Hi.
Mayor Oaks?
Hi.
Mr. Claffey?
Hi.
Mr. Darby?
Hi.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. I was advised by our city attorney, John Blair, that Morgan is allowed to call the roll in an unofficial capacity. Right. Councilor Doll, can you please state the remote location from which you are participating?
One thousand three East Beverly Street, Stanton.
Thank you, could everyone on council as well as the audience here, Councilor Doll?
I think they could hear.
Yes, okay, all right, well, thank you and welcome. Next. On October twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two, I received a request from Councilor Mead to participate remotely in the October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two Stanton City Council meeting due to a temporary medical condition.
Mayor Oaks? Councilor Holmes? I move to allow Councilor Mead to remotely participate in the October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two Stanton City Council meeting pursuant to Stanton City Council Procedural Memorandum Number Three.
Is there a second? Second. All right, we have a second by Vice Mayor Robertson. Any further discussion?
Ms. Mead?
Yes?
So you're gonna, you're gonna be here in person in the regular meeting, correct?
Yes, sir.
And why is that?
I have a temporary medical condition that prevents me from attending a meeting in a poorly ventilated room with many people, and I don't feel uncomfortable being in the chamber, city council chamber, I do feel uncomfortable being in the caucus room.
So you have a study that says this caucus room is less ventilated than the big meeting room?
Tell by looking at it.
I mean, I would just, hey, I'm no engineer, but I would say that just a smaller room with the same system, it probably circulates air better and quicker.
Not with as many people in it.
Well, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, I mean, I'm gonna vote to put you in, Ms. Mead, but I, I would just, it is what it is.
I think I have a right to make my own healthcare decision.
Absolutely, ma'am.
Yes, thank you.
Absolutely.
Just a reminder that I, as well as other women, all other women, have a right to make our healthcare decisions.
Yes, ma'am, I agree with that too, but I also agree that, that like, was it, two days ago, there was one COVID patient in the hospital, as of the night, that had a positivity rate of five point three, I believe. And your, and our president said, two weeks ago, I believe, that for all intents purposes, COVID was over, I'm just saying.
Thanks for sharing those numbers, I was fully vaccinated, and I took a trip to Minnesota, ended up in a, in a enclosed place with, with many people and came home with COVID. So I, I got COVID very recently, I don't want it again. So I think I have a right to make that, that decision for myself.
Well, you do, and I'm sorry you got COVID.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Hi.
Mr. Holmes?
What are we voting on?
Mayor Oaks?
Hi.
Ms. Doll?
Hi.
Mr. Claffey?
Hi.
Ms. Darby?
Hi.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Councilor Mead, can you please state the remote location from which you are participating?
Three four two Sherwood Avenue, Stanton.
Thank you, could everyone on council as well as the audience here, Councilor Mead?
Absolutely.
Yes, thank you and welcome. All right, that takes us to the next item, I'll entertain a motion to allow Morgan Smith to serve as our temporary clerk of council for the Stanton City Council meeting.
Madam Mayor.
Councilor Claffey?
I move that Morgan Smith be appointed as acting clerk of council for the recreditation and proceedings to council and its work session and regular meeting of October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, and that she be authorized and directed to sign and execute such documents as are necessary and proper regarding the presence of council members for consideration.
There's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
A second.
Right, Councilor Darby is second, any further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Hi.
Mr. Holmes?
What are we voting on?
Mayor Oaks?
Hi.
Ms. Doll?
Hi.
Mr. Claffey?
Hi.
Ms. Darby?
Hi.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. That takes us to the next item, I'll entertain a motion to allow Morgan Smith to serve as our temporary clerk of council for the Stanton City Council meeting.
Madam Mayor.
Councilor Claffey?
I move that Morgan Smith be appointed as acting clerk of council for the recreditation and proceedings to council and its work session and regular meeting of October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, and that she be authorized and directed to sign and execute such documents as are necessary and proper regarding the presence of council members for consideration.
There's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
A second.
Right, Councilor Darby is second, any further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Hi.
Mr. Holmes?
Hi.
Mayor Oaks?
Hi.
Ms. Mead?
Hi.
Mr. Claffey?
Hi.
Ms. Darby?
Hi.
Mayor Oaks?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Hi.
Ms. Mead?
Hi.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. That takes us on to the next item, item two is a discussion of Augusta County Courthouse. Ms. Beauregard?
This is added at the request of council member Mead to discuss whether city council should take a position on Augusta County's efforts to relocate their courts, so I will turn it over to Ms. Mead now.
Thanks, I appreciate it, I know we're all aware that Augusta County has developed and presented two courthouse proposals to their citizens, the Stanton option and the Verona option. The Stanton option is presented at a cost of a hundred and four million dollars and allocates over eighteen million dollars to the cost of building a temporary location during demolition and construction of the district courthouse. The Stanton option would demolish the current district court building and jail on Johnson Street at a cost of about a million dollars. The Stanton option would replace those buildings with a five-story building above Johnson Street, whose mass would dominate the historic downtown and likely present challenges to approval by the Historic Commission. Even if Augusta County voters chose the Stanton option, the approval process could take many months and result in further acrimony between the city and the county. The Verona option is presented at a cost of eighty million or twenty-four million dollars less than the Stanton option. And we all know that the, a matter will be decided by the voters of Augusta County in the November referendum. Tonight, I'm gonna propose that city council issue a statement of support for the removal, not for one option or the other, but for the removal of the Augusta County Courthouse to Verona. And I, I wanna say I've already heard some objections. First, I was informed that I'm, because I'm a come here, I don't have enough historical perspective on the matter, and I should just keep quiet and let the from here's dictate that strategy. To that, I'll have to say, where has that strategy of the last thirty years gotten us in this battle with the Board of Supervisors? I was also informed that it's bad negotiating strategy to, to offer something up without getting anything for it. And my response to that is it's not a negotiation unless there are at least two parties at the table. It's simply a gesture of goodwill, and I have no idea where it might lead. And at a time when the relationship between city council and the Board of Supervisors is at the lowest point in thirty years, I really don't see the downside in making this statement. That's all I have to say, I appreciate hearing what other members of council would have to say about that.
Ms. Mead?
Vice Mayor Robertson?
I know, I know you and I've had our differences, but this is one case that you and I see eye to eye.
Somebody write that down.
Yeah, I know, I know. I, I mean, I'm, I've won and I've stated this position, and I've gotten, I've gotten some long looks, but I'm one of the few, I was six to one at one time, but anyway, I fully believe that in personal property rights, that courthouse and that property is Augusta County's. And we don't have the right to tell them they can't pick up and move their property where they wanna go. My main thing is I don't want anything to happen to that historical building, I want it to stay right where it is. I personally would love to see, love, I would personally would love to see us as a city do something with that building. Now, I don't know where Augusta County falls on that, I personally would love to see it used for what it is intended to be used, but that's something else we'll have to discuss. But, Ms. Mead, you and I do see eye to eye on this.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Councilor Claffey?
I just wanna point out that the Stanton plan certainly was never acquired or achieved by any speaking to us about it. And, and the fact that they're saying it's a hundred million dollar project, and this is the Stanton version, is ludicrous, because we have had nothing to do with it. And therefore, I am reluctant to say that you oughta go ahead and do what you wanna do. The voters of Augusta County are going to have to pull the lever next week. Citizens of Stanton have absolutely nothing to do with this. We, this is out of our hands, let it go, let's look at it again after the voters decide what they wanna do, and I assure you that we're not going to pay a hundred million dollars on that courthouse. Now, I agree with you, Vice Mayor Robertson, I want it to remain in Stanton, and I would like to see it be used as a courthouse, but I don't have a hundred million dollars.
Oh, no, no.
So I am not willing to say, y'all go with our blessings, because I think Augusta County has not ever tried to involve us in any of this. So therefore, why am I offering them the olive branch if they have never come to us and said anything positive about how can we proceed together? I see no need to throw them the olive branch. And other thing, I, I heard that we have the lowest agree of.
Competence of working together.
In thirty years, and, and I sort of wanna doubt that, yesterday at a meeting we were at, we heard that we have fifty-four joint ventures with Stanton, Augusta, and Waynesboro going on right now. Regional programs, I, I don't think that this one matter is going to stop everything else, I think we can get along with Augusta County, but we certainly don't have to agree that the Stanton plan is a hundred million dollar courthouse plan, and therefore you should take the Verona plan, which is twenty million dollars less. That's all I gotta say.
Mayor.
Councilor Amy Dorey? I think that we have, we, we all know, we have one issue in regards to this whole topic, Augusta County voters are gonna vote, and that's gonna be the outcome. Stanton's issue is, if that passes, what do we do, where do we put our juvenile court? And as far as I'm concerned, that is the only thing that we should be focused on right now, is what and where are we going to put our juvenile court? You know, I know that there are many Stanton citizens that do not support Augusta County's move to Verona. I know that there are many Stanton citizens that do not want the county seat to go to Verona, and I know that there's many Stanton citizens that did not like the process through the General Assembly. And so for this council to involve itself by giving any kind of letter of support to Augusta County when our constituents do not even get to vote in this matter, I think is, I don't think we're doing our due diligence, I don't think we're doing what we're tasked to do by representing the city of Stanton. And so I, I think that we need to focus on our juvenile court, and we need to stay out of this until after the election in a couple of weeks, and then hopefully make some headway with whatever we need to do.
Other comments?
I've come to agree with Mark, I really do think that, and Brenda, I do think that they're gonna move it, and, and when, when they put these figures in front of the people in the county, they're gonna, and, and everybody should know by even, they, they got a lot out there that's flat and ready to build on, you know, and it's not gonna take them, they're not gonna tear nothing down, they're not gonna have to do anything. And I'd like for us, maybe by doing this, maybe we'll have more say in what happens to the buildings here in town, you know, I really hate to see them just sit there, and we know that they could do that, just let them sit there and be, fall apart. You know, we can make them mow the yard, or, but that's about all we can make them do, and I, 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 I think it's probably a done deal, and I don't, I'm just tired of talking about it. I think we should let the county do what they want, it's their building, and, 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 and I, I think we should just hope that they'll be nice and give it to us, you know, that'd be, that'd be the best thing.
No, I, I laugh at the fact that maybe they'll be nice to us, I mean, come on, folks, you sit there and say this has been an ignored.
I've been in this town, I've been in this town for thirty-some years, I don't know what happened that caused the animosity between Waynesboro and Stanton, I guess it, it occurred back in, you know, Stanton was considered more of the elite town and Waynesboro the middle town, but, but it's, it, it's crazy, we should be, with all the things that we work on together, there's a lot of more things we should be working on, we should be, our tourism department for the county, the state, the city, and Waynesboro, if, we could get a lot more bang for the buck if we went in together, you know, and it's, and it's other departments like that too, that we could, we could probably really save a little bit of money. You know, we're never gonna unite the schools, we're never gonna do any of those kind of things, but there are a lot of other things that we could still be working on, and, and, and I just personally believe that, you know, that it's just time to let it go. I mean, I know we've had some ugly, ugly, ugly meetings over the years, and it's, and it's just, I don't think there's any, any more use in doing it, fighting, fighting that battle.
Councilor Doll, did you have any comments?
Well, I thought you'd never ask. I've been in this town over seventy years, and, and it's traditional for all, each locality to say they hate that, that the other ones hate them, it's, it's almost a tradition. And despite all this supposed hatred, we've worked together for years, for decades, for generations, in doing regional things like, like our wastewater treatment plant, the, the landfill, the animal shelter, there are, there are social services, CSP, I mean, you can just go on and on, because there really are over fifty regional things that work fine. And we do this on a daily basis, but for whatever reason, we all like to say, oh, Waynesboro and Stanton don't get along, oh, Augusta County and Stanton doesn't get along, but it's just a tradition, I've decided that there's, you know, when, when we need to work together, we do just fine. So my only thoughts on the courthouse is that, if I reverse that, if it was, if we were going to vote in Stanton on moving our courthouse, how would Stantonians look at Augusta County supporting either effort? You know, they'd be like, it's none of your business, and so for that, you know, for that reason, it's like, it's totally Augusta County's vote, and it's totally up to them, we're not, you know, I, I, I just feel better staying out of it and not being perceived as trying to influence it one way or the other. I think we can all assume, based on those, the costs in the, in the referendum question itself, I can't imagine it going any way but the way that it's going to go. But, but I don't see us doing something prior to the election, it, it seems like we'd be looked at as meddling, so that's my, that's my two cents on it.
I too agree that we should stay out of it, I do not wanna give the illusion in any way, shape, or form that we are telling the voters of Augusta County how to vote. I serve on one of those regional programs with a couple of the members of the Board of Supervisors, and we get along fine. So at this point, I just need a hit nod, you want the letter, Councilor?
No.
All right, so it looks like there will be no letter of support sent.
Thank you, I appreciate everyone going on record and being very clear about their opposition to extending this gesture of goodwill to Augusta County.
Well, it's, it's not opposition of not offering goodwill, in my viewpoint, it's a matter of just staying out of it and letting the voters of Augusta County make the decision. So, all right, we need to move on to the next item, I apologize that we're running over to our guest with this joint budget work session that we're having with, or discussion, I should say, with the school board. And I just wanted to let the public know that the school board and the city council, we are meeting earlier than ever, and we're doing this intentionally, so the school board can let the city council know of any needs that they may have, and the city council can start having the conversation earlier rather than later, and we can start to properly budget, especially with CIP. And we just wanna be able to have a conversation, and I'm sure there's going to be several questions going back and forth, so there's no set agenda for the joint meeting. However, it's just a matter of, well, just listening to one another and doing it earlier, so we can know what to expect down the road. Chairperson Natasha McCurdy, do you need to open up your meeting?
Please, so I call this meeting of the Stanton City School Board to order, I believe all members are present, I'll find everybody.
Right, and I'll turn it over to the school boards.
All right, thank you, Mayor Oaks, thank you, Ms. McCurdy, so just to get started, like you said, Mayor Oaks, it's a, it's a discussion that we're gonna have tonight, and I understand that I'll start out with a, with kind of a general update, if any council members or board members or anyone else wanna interject at any time, please do, because it is a discussion. So just really quickly, as an overview, the, the city and school finance staffs have been meeting for several months, we have a weekly meeting every Wednesday afternoon, and those meetings involve Ms. Beauregard, our new CFO, Jesse Muers, Chad Horvath, Sidney Fitzgerald, Mr. Brad Wagner and I, and so we've had, we've had some really productive meetings, we have that structure in place. So it's really helpful if we need to bring any department leads from the school side or any department leads from the city side, depending on what we're talking about, so that, again, that's been going on for several months. A couple of weeks ago, Ms. Beauregard and Ms. McCurdy and Mayor Oaks and I had a very productive meeting, and we thought it would be really helpful to keep those going, to make sure we have communication, you know, flowing back and forth between both entities, so we've agreed to meet once a month moving forward on top of those weekly meetings with the finance departments. So all those things put us really further ahead than we were in previous years. The, the city, in our most recent meeting, we got very, very preliminary numbers from our new CFO, of this, we're about what the operating agreement will look like, and if everybody remembers, Ms. Beauregard, Mr. Wagner, Ms. Muers, they worked very hard on, on the operating agreement along with both attorneys. And so we have a very preliminary idea of what that number will be, and that's the number we'll be working with, and to have it, you know, to have an idea this early is so much more helpful, it's not a guessing game. We know what our challenges will be, and I think it's, our main challenge will be the same one that other school divisions will be facing across the state, and that is raises for, for staff. And as everybody in this room knows, when the governor or the general assembly says we're gonna give teachers a five percent raise, about seventy to seventy-five percent of the burden of that raise falls on the locality, and so that's very difficult for everybody. Since I've been here, generally over the biennium, it's been a five percent raise, you give a two percent one year, a three percent the next year, but in the last biennial budget coming out of Richmond, they called for a ten percent raise over two years. So that's a big difference, a five percent raise over two years versus a ten percent raise over two years, you know, as everything, the cost of everything is going up. So, you know, our initial, very initial analysis is, we'll be able to afford that raise, but I don't think we'll be able to do too much more with positions, we understand that's, that's where we are, we wanna keep the people we have, we wanna continue to recognize and reward them for the great work that they're doing in our schools, and that's about right where we are with the budget. We just sent out requests to department heads and principals, we asked them to give us their budget request less than a week ago, so that's how early we are in, in the process right now.
How many positions do you have on the field right now?
So right now, and we have, we're short two Spanish teachers, a special education teacher, an elementary school teacher, a school psychologist, a bus driver, one science physician, and a couple of custodians. We're generally faring better than most divisions when it comes to filling openings. So these are positions that are in the budget. We just haven't been able to fill them.
How many of those positions are SOQ positions here?
So for any school division in Virginia, approximately 40% of our total positions are SOQ positions. So according to the Virginia Department of Education, any school division can run their business day to day with 40% of the staff that we have. And it's a ridiculous notion. And so exactly which ones are SOQ and which ones aren't, you know, I'm not sure.
Is the school board and the school superintendent happy with what the numbers you are seeing?
Yes, because, like I said, unlike in the past, we know now, and we're not afraid to do the extra work to get out there and start recruiting and hiring as early as possible. And, you know, our biggest, our main goal is we fix these openings.
Reason that question was asked.
That's a legitimate amendment to that.
Yeah, I know. And that may be why I'm going to say what I'm going to say. I will tell you point blank, and this is, I have not talked to my councilmates. But if there is to be a repeat of the guerrilla tactics, and that's all I'm going to say about it, it was used last year. From this councilman, you're going to get some pushback. Because we want to make sure that our students are taken care of. Absolutely. But the water's got to flow. That gentleman right there and his entire department's got to keep your kids and parents safe. We've got to be able to pick up the trash. We've got to be able to pay our employees. And I heard, I heard numbers come out last year that you want to build what? You're going to want us to pay for what? And I just, we want to get along. We know we were both elected bodies. But we, I mean, this thing, it felt like we were in warfare last year. And I appreciate the fact, because y'all have to try to take care of your bodies. And I know you had to do whatever you wanted, but please don't go down that road again.
I'm going to skate around many of the language that you chose to use regarding.
But I wanted you to know where I stood.
I hear you. And I think that you and the other council members understand where we stood in terms of how our budget was cut previously and not restored. And I think that there is plenty of public record around that. What we're talking about now is looking forward, right? That, and as is put into the operation agreement, which we all signed off on and are thrilled to have, right? As was included in that, that's the baseline. We are, as a school board body, fully within our rights to say, this is what that's going to cover. If we are going to continue to improve as a school system, there are going to be times when we're going to need to ask for more than what the baseline is. And I'm really appreciative that the conversations are starting now because that's going to help us all stay on the same page. The fact that this 5% raise each year in the biennium is going to basically take over any increase that is embedded in what's coming from the operating agreement numbers. We're concerned that we're not going to be able to keep pace with our neighboring school systems in terms of instructional assistance, in terms of all the things that our teachers have been telling us for years that we need. And so I feel like we need to also all be on the same page about that.
And I appreciate that fact. I just, and I consider a lot of y'all friends. And I think we can be friends. But I want you to know where, you know, we only have a finite amount of money, too. And we have, like I said, to keep the police working, we have to keep water on, the trash pick up. There's a lot of things we've got to do, and we have to make sure our kids are educated.
And that's one of the reasons why we met with Delegate Aboli earlier and that we encourage everyone here or listening and at this table to also reach out to Delegate Aboli and Senator Hanger about the changes that we need at the state level. Because we know that our ratio from the state says that we can cover six, how much percent of our budget is it, what's our?
SOQ's account for 40%.
Right, but so they, but they tell us that, what's our ratio, that we can cover?
The composite in this? Yeah, that's about the same.
It's about the same, right?
They say it's the localities.
So they say we can cover about 60%, but because of the way that their budget is structured, we end up covering 75, right? So there are changes at the state level that need to happen. And we're hoping that we, as two elected bodies, can be partners in this as we continue to work to help those adjustments come along that we can meet.
And I could run through that Richmond mess.
You know, I understand the Richmond mess, and unfortunately, it's been that way forever.
Yeah.
And until something changes down there, I mean, we could sit here around this table and say, wouldn't it be wonderful? But I think we're wasting our time on going down that until Richmond does change the way they fund it. I think the reason we're here tonight is because in our regular meeting, our point C tonight is the consideration of ordinance to amend the 2023 budget ordinance for the city standby adding budget amendment number two, school portion only. Now, we all understand that our job is to give you all the money, and you all do get up any way you want to. We get that. But we are responsible for looking at the dollar in. So consequently, when you get a, was it a $10 million fee for all intents and purposes? With, how much was the total budget amendment?
Seven.
Seven, seven of it? Seven of it was here. The overall budget amendment number two was for almost 10 million, and we approved our portion. But 70% of it pertained to the school. And we had no explanation of any of those numbers, which brought up the, you know, why is the work group not meeting? Why do we not know what the 70% of it, the 7.2 million, what is this for? And we went through it, and I believe it was brought up, but just line by line. And it was like, she didn't have all the specific numbers. And that's why we said, okay, we'll approve our city portion, and let's talk it over with the school. So why don't you all start by going over that and telling us what projects we are funding? And where, what percent it's going to fund? And what future obligations you see are going to be needed from the city? Because that's the real crux of this work session.
So I answered.
Right, not the operator, yeah.
So I answered several questions from the city council in advance of the meeting. One of the questions, Mr. Claffey, was about the work group and why they weren't meeting. I wasn't a part of the work group, but I did find the answer in the June 2022 Stanton Plan. And so right in here, get to the end, operations complex in Shelburne Middle School. And the analysis says that the work group completed their initial work and met last, or last met in September 2021. In December 2021, Stanton City Schools received two independent appraisals of both target properties. In early January 2022, Stanton City Schools reached out to the property owner regarding one of those properties and received permission to access the property as needed to conduct Phase One and Two environmental tests. Presently, Stanton City Schools is soliciting bids for engagement of consultants to perform the requisite environmental due diligence. Once they have those results, Stanton City Schools will seek to close the purchase with guidance from their legal counsel and issue an RFP for architectural services. Whether the working group will meet again is to be determined. And so that's from this city document. So that's the answer that I have about the work group. So since that time, I can update you. In Phase One of the property, over there, the Evers property, there were some concerns noted, including some tanks in the ground. We didn't proceed to Phase Two because of our concerns from Phase One. And we started.
You did or did?
We did not. We did not. Because of the initial concerns for Phase One, we were worried Phase Two and the resulting, you know, information could be highly expensive. We were at that same time in negotiations with the property owner. We couldn't get very close to a deal that was close to our highest appraisal. We were very far apart. We offered slightly over the highest appraisal number. And we couldn't, couldn't narrow it down any further. So we stepped away for a while, came back, and began to engage them in some conversations about leasing the property. Because as, well, everyone at least on council and on the school board knows, all of this is contingent with SFR money that has a September 2024 deadline to be obligated and spent down. So, you know, we're under some time pressure, just like every other school division. And what happens is you have every school division competing for the same vendors, you know, trying to spend this money. And so we have, since that time, successfully signed off a lease and filed it here with the city. October 1st was our move-in date. Drove by today, and we actually have a school bus undercover.
Undercover!
In a garage. And our mechanic was so excited because he thought it was going to rain all day today. And for the first time in 35 years, he would be able to work, not out in the elements. So we're in there. Mr. McCray and his crew are busy cleaning it up, painting it, brightening it up, putting, moving our equipment out of the Shelburne basement to this location. So we have this main shop and lots around it. So it's enough for our maintenance shop to get out of the basement at Shelburne, and they're currently moving. It's enough for us to service our buses, and we have a lift over there and everything. It's enough for our employees to park and everything. But we don't have enough land over there for, to accommodate all of our buses. So they're still with Mr. Johnston over in Public Works.
That was going to be my next question. So wasn't there a piece of property across the street?
Yeah.
Well, it's all Mr. Evers.
But he wouldn't, he wouldn't put that in the lease.
Well, he would have. I think he was interested in talking about it.
But in a much more.
Yeah. So we have retained the architect. We had a meeting today. It's a phased project. Yep, well, for all of it. This is an architect.
Yeah, you haven't talked about the, one of the reasons we're doing a lease, because of other property that would take longer to develop, right?
Yeah, so that's part of it. That's the last phase of the project. So the first phase of the, so, you know, leasing the Evers property allows us to clear the maintenance shop out of the basement in Shelburne, where everybody knows they've been for 50 years, and sometimes the fumes leak up into the classrooms. So we're starting to move out there. And then the first phase, and we just had a meeting with the architect today. We're rotating school board members through now. The first, very first phase would be to take the old maintenance area down here, and we feel like we can turn that into these CTE lab spaces as career and technical education. So though where the maintenance shop was now become classroom spaces. And then right above it, where we have unfinished spaces, we can fit a few more classrooms. So now we're really cooking over there. This is, this is the Phase One of the Shelburne project. Every other part of the project is dependent on the money for the project. Here's how it kind of looks from the outside. You can see the classrooms and even some outdoor covered spaces for students and staff. They need to do experiments outside and those types of things. Then Phase Two would involve a commons space on the wear side of Shelburne Middle School. If we're able to afford it, that would seat about 300 students. I can show you kind of a side view, kind of there. And then finally, Phase Three would be the construction of a consolidated operations facility, which we've been trying to get since we, you know, tried to acquire Building 126. And we are looking at some land on the west side of town now. We've had a meeting with the city planning department right in here and talked about all of that. The particular piece of land we're looking at is half in Stanton and half in Augusta County. And I remember getting that question from the EDA if we looked anywhere in Augusta County, you know, several months ago when we were going through that. So all these are different phases, and they're all dependent on the funding for the project. We know we have the funding to do the CTE spaces once the maintenance shop gets out and the spaces above it. We know we can do that. There was construction funding for every school division in the state budget this year, depending on your enrollment and some other factors. So we're adding that in there. I think our total, we're up to about, for all these projects, our total right now of money saved is, thank you, Brett. Eight point, eight point three five. We have 8.35 billion dedicated to these projects right now. And that includes 2.75 million of our SFR3 pandemic relief funds, 1.6 million from the School Construction Program grant. That was in this year's budget. From our city council, we generously have from an FY22 budget amendment, 2.5 million. And we've pulled 1.5 million out of our reserves that have been approved by school board so far. So that's how we get to the 8.3 that we have reserved for these projects right now.
Tell me, what, is there any shortfall? Would you just, all this stuff you said, what's, is there a shortfall?
I'm not sure what you mean.
How much is the total, all three phases of the project going to cost? We don't know.
We don't know. Well, we think it's going to cost more than 8.3 for sure.
That's what I'm trying to get at.
You're asking me, yeah.
Well, what is your total reserve?
Our total reserves are what we're trying to allocate in the COP to these various projects, the matter that's in front of the city council right now.
That's the total? Now, what's all your carryover, what's part of your total reserve that you can use for these various projects? You said that your school board has approved 2.5 million of it?
No, 1.5.
Be approved 2.5.
Yeah, the city approved 2.5.
But out of the 1.5 that you all approved, that comes out of what total?
I have that. So projected numbers, and this is based on data that's currently being audited. At the end of FY22, it was 5.8 million. And 3.6 is in the budget of its site.
And 1 million of the 3.6 is for the regional programs, correct?
Right. Phase one.
Which we've talked about the.
Yeah. The O-Tech slash.
SV Cal, the Shenandoah Valley Center for Advanced Learning, yeah.
Just when I got to BCT, they changed. So Dr. Smith, can you talk a little bit more about the tanks? Because I'm trying to visualize these tanks. So you've already signed the lease, and the tanks are at Evers?
They're underground.
Fuel tanks.
They're underground. They've been probably, they've been unhooked and probably crowded up and things like that. That's why we didn't continue with Phase Two at that point because of the expense and the fact that, you know, we were really at wits' end at that point. We weren't sure what we were going to do. And that's why we went back with the lease idea, again, driven by the timeline pressure and trying to get this project at Shelburne started. So now we can get it started.
So since it's leased versus since you own it, do the tanks, they'll not come out?
No, they don't have to come out. We don't have to deal.
Because we're not going to turn it in.
We don't have to deal with that because we're not.
It's just to get.
So that God has.
The reason is they would have to come out if they had some kind of lease, and that would be Mr. Evers' responsibility.
Okay, since he still owns.
Right, exactly.
And I'd like to acknowledge Councilmember Holmes's assistance through this whole thing, you know, helping us get these conversations started and moving forward.
I'm just sorry it didn't work out because, you know, it was, it seemed like a relief.
Yeah.
The money that we're paying now, if we get a chance to purchase the property, will all count towards the purchase. So it's still, there's still a possibility.
Okay. Going like a rent to own?
Yes, exactly, kind of like that.
Put in there that Evers takes the tanks out. That would be awesome.
I'm concerned about, like, the cost of all this, what you're saying it's going to cost now. I can't see that staying there because of what happened in Florida and all the.
I know.
All, 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 all the stuff is gonna be just, it's gonna be outrageous. I bought, I bought ceiling tiles that I used to pay forty dollars for and they were two hundred and nineteen dollars and, and that was six less. And that was to ceiling tiles.
Yeah, and that's why we phased everything because it's so uncertain.
And that's why we're looking at putting the million dollars into the Shenandoah Valley Center for Advanced Learning. Because they are also in phase one A, I think, is the portion of their plan that they're in. And um we had not originally committed funds because we didn't have the funds to commit at the time because we were using our S R funds for this. Uh but they're going to go over budget and we have not participated in that project and we, we need to step up.
And we had a construction meeting over there this week as well.
It's a regional program?
It is, and we're committed to it.
Yeah.
So how much do you anticipate that being in the, all of them?
Which part?
We're not, we're not. We're not committing to anything but beyond this phase one A and.
Neither has Waynesboro or Augusta County.
And we're all. We're already has checked with our counterparts.
Because of looking at supplies going up and up, just when they thought supplies had stabilized after COVID, supply chain, whatever. Okay, it's calmed down and then the hurricanes hit and it's going through, going through the roof that we'd like to be able to build.
So is there anything you're? And I, I'm pretty sure I know the answer to this question, but is there anything that you're looking uh for the city council to do for you tonight?
I, I just thought tonight was just kind of a preliminary discussion update of where we are and, and clarifying some questions that you had um about that budget amendment.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I thought you might have approved the.
That would be wonderful, yeah, thank you.
Well, I, I, I made sure our region partners knew that we couldn't move forward unless this budget amendment was approved, so they're, they're aware.
Well, when do you think uh you'll be able to start on Shelburne?
So as far as I'm concerned, we started because this, today was our third meeting with the architect, we're meeting biweekly. Um what the principal talked about, the architect today was coming over and meeting with the C T E teachers to get their input on everything. And pretty soon uh we'll do a whole presentation with the faculty, um get them excited about everything. Um so, I mean, we've started, we've started, but the actual starting, and, and of course, we're fixing up the Evers uh spot right now. And, and making it workable for our maintenance department and those guys are excellent as, you know.
But that work is being done by our guy.
Yeah. So that's trying to save.
Uh yes, Josh Bauer again from Crabtree, yeah.
Excellent.
So we're in the design phase already.
And C T E is basically kind of like what shop was.
Career Technical Education, so it can be shop, yeah. Shop, technology, engineering.
People maybe, for people that are on track to go to college or something.
Well, you know, they're making more money than people who are graduating from college, right? It's a very viable pathway for young people now, um for families.
Those opportunities back into the middle school, being able to get those kids in those rooms earlier.
You can get a sampling of it and say, oh, I always wanted to be a carpenter. And you get into this intro class, you go, no, don't think so, but across all, now I can try out electrical and that's where my calling is. I didn't know, but at the middle school level, be able to sample things instead of committing at the high school level. And then finding out that you didn't pick the one that touched.
So, so you're, so you, the school board believes that the uh it's more cost effective to continue forward to phase three. While leasing phase one instead of, have you gotten any hard numbers to know how much if you wanted to like move forward with purchasing? Phase one, what that would look like compared to what phase three is gonna cost?
We kind of have a ballpark idea of what phase three will cost to purchase the land. One of the um, one of the things that we're interested in discussing is the city's interest in being a partner in that as well. Because um again, I wasn't on the work group, but I know one of the big topics of discussion was a space study by the city. And um just like we've been talking all along since we were uh looking at building one twenty six, we're, we're happy to, to partner. We all have needs, we all have space needs, um in addition to our, you know, budgetary needs. And um, you know, it's, it's hard to find land in Stanton. And we think this, this particular uh property has a lot of potential. And because it's, it's pasture land, we don't think there are gonna be any environmental considerations that we need to be concerned about. So um I think it's a great opportunity for, you know, for the future, for the schools and, and the city. Love to engage more in that conversation.
So tonight, if we were to pass the school portion of the uh budget amendment number two. Then um you all could move forward with the regional program of what, I'm old school, I call it a Valley Botec and. The government.
Those two elements still exist, there's just an umbrella now.
You can move forward with.
And our partners there would be awfully happy.
Yeah.
Because they're, they're waiting to see what they can.
They've already got commitments of what they're going to do and are.
They're already sending them in.
When are you jumping in?
Um Garrett, you mentioned partnering with us, so I mean, that's a conversation we can continue to have.
We talked about that in a couple of meetings about, you know, because we got so much stuff at. Public Works and so much stuff over at Marks and Rec, you know, that we need someplace to go, but it's not trash yet. You know, so it needs to be stored and uh so uh, you know, I, I know that we had talked about that a few times.
You have comments?
Would you be planning on putting the, the refrigerated storage?
So our, so our.
That's exactly, I, I was like, and, we were talking about.
Right now, right now, we um like the cheapest plan is to buy a refrigerated trailer and set it up over there at Evers. It'll save us a lot of costs on transporting and storing, we'll be able to buy food more in bulk. There is also a possibility of some carryover.
Do you buy from certain purveyors, do you like, like Cisco or somebody like that? They might, you, you might work a deal with them and say, listen, give me the truck, you know, and we'll buy from you. And, and you know, they might, they might at least not charge you for the truck or something.
You know, and Earl McCray, he's probably already pricing refrigerated trailer, but I will, I will mention that tomorrow.
So the idea of being able to rent um the refrigeration space to Augusta County in Waynesboro, I mean, is that still?
It's possible, it's possible, I mean, it's not as huge as the one that, at the old building one twenty six.
Yeah, because that's what Evers started talking about, because there was a lot of space there that could have been utilized and made some money.
So yeah, that's a possibility.
So Gregor, did you have any comments? Just trying to think. Did any, any of the council members or school board members? Okay, well, I plan on supporting the amendment tonight. Because I, I feel that Stanton needs to be able to move forward with, at the very least, with the regional program, so.
I know I won't be here, but I would like to support going in with the building, you know, and helping them. And helping us as far as uh having this area. If you're gonna build a building out, out in a pasture somewhere, you can build it just a little bit bigger and, and we'd have some storage space. Get some stuff out of all, maybe we can clean out some of the closets here and make it a, uh, make it a, make it an office for uh.
You go to finance part of that, you send your help.
Well, shoot, if I had a big refrigerator.
So I realized we, we discussed uh this amendment and. Um Dr. Smith, you mentioned, I think it was approximately nine positions that are vacant at this time and then the five percent raise. Annual five percent raise, was there anything else at this point? I mean, we still have some time, so was there anything else?
One of the things like uh, like Ms. Rafferty said, one of the things we've been looking at is, you know, adding instructional assistants where we can. Those, those positions used to be easy to fill and a lot of times, I mean, it was parents because they had the same vacation schedules, the same hours as their children who were school age children. And some of these instructional assistants are just fabulous, pretty much all of them are fabulous. And they're really a great bang for your buck and so, uh because we have a substitute shortage, you know, because, you know, there's a teacher shortage. And one of our ideas is to, you know, try to hire a block of instructional assistants, really train them up through our Stanton City Schools University. Be as good of instructors as possible and we're trying to get their pay up because there's some of our lowest paid employees. And then, you know, if, if we have uh teachers that, just like everybody else, you know, they get sick kids and they have appointments and they have desks in the family. And it's really hard to cover when you don't have any subs. But if we had people in the school that were already part of the staff, that we had trained up, that were there every day, I think that could alleviate a lot of that. And make the kind of the quality of the workplace a lot better for our teachers. Um and I think that would be well received and as far as, you know, budgetary implications, it's, it's about as smart a use as your money. As you can get a real person for the, for the salary and benefits that we pay for instructional assistants.
You all are already doing the, you're still doing the same thing with subs this last year.
Got the floater subs, but it's not always enough.
And I just wanna step back to Mares, when we were talking about the nine um open positions we have now. That, that's not funding we're looking for, those are budgeted positions that we have not been able to fill yet, so.
So that won't add anything, that won't add anything to the budget.
No, it's really the instructional assistants besides the five percent.
This is a, well.
And that's before we get requests from any of the schools, but yes.
I think that the teacher shortage across the country is, is killing us, you know, because you can't get. One thing, I don't think teachers get any respect like they did when we were kids, but uh, you know, uh, but it's really hard when you're not paying them enough. And, and a teacher's work doesn't stop. Exactly, you take it home with you.
You don't clock out and that's it.
Yeah, so it's like, a lot of people don't understand that, I don't think. They think, oh, they get three months off in the summer, you know.
Doesn't happen anymore either.
No, uh, that's when they've gotta be taking classes to keep their certifications. It's, it's really hard, I mean, it's.
Did you have something?
Yeah, we, we are still down from, from five or six years ago, we're still down dozens and dozens of instructional assistants.
Back there.
We, we've not.
The support cap.
Asking for that.
You need help out of the colleges, like these.
Small sections bring the students.
We've had some and the student.
Give an example of how, how that works, especially well, we struggled with getting that school accredited. And what Dr. Smith did was go ahead and put what resources we had as instructional assistants in there. All of a sudden, they got the best scores of any elementary school, so that tells you what, what instructional assistants were.
And I think I asked you this question before, because you, you seemed really excited and that, that has been a year or so ago, but I mean, is that program still going? It was the Southwest Virginia.
Yes, the cohort that we joined.
It's so successful.
Instructional program.
Is that still?
I can tell you, Mr. Robinson, that.
I was like, can we please call it something else because we already have a C I P.
It's a very competitive uh group of school divisions that are performing well, especially relative to the poverty in the school divisions. And uh Stanton City Schools made the most relative growth of any school division where. You know, first, uh Dr. Hurt, who, who manages the program, called Ms. Haskins, our executive director of instruction, and said, you know what? Out of all of the school divisions in this cohort, Stanton City Schools made the most growth. And then he called back about fifteen minutes later, he said, check that, he made the most growth in the whole state.
Wow.
So uh our programs are, are working, our cycle of continuous school improvement is working. Um and when we talk about equity, having great teaching going on in every class is, that's the fastest way to get there.
And in the nonprofit world, we talk about how everybody, when, when the pandemic hit, everybody stepped it up and did superhuman work, right? And then you start to look at them doing this work and succeeding and they say, oh, well, then it just must be human work if you're able to continue. It's not super anymore, it's just become the new threshold. And we're seeing that in our staff and schools too, they have done incredible work to not, we haven't lost the ground. That other school systems have during the pandemic, that's why we've seen such growth relative to others in the state. But we can't keep expecting them to do this without support, yeah.
Well, and, and I think you listen, I've seen or listened to other uh reports out there and just evidently not here. But in other school divisions throughout the nation, where especially the younger population, I mean, they have literally bottomed out. Thirty years because, I mean, it weren't a type thing where how are these kids, how are we, how are they going to get those kids back up where they should be? Because they were, this virtual learning, you know, they just weren't, there weren't learning.
If you don't have, if you don't have the support at home, you don't have some person that, that makes you sit down and do your homework and, and study and read. That really makes a lot of difference too.
And I, and I've got, I've got several friends that are teachers and, and a couple of principals. I mean, and they tell you that unfortunately in today's schools, especially some of these elementary schools, teachers literally are, are almost babysitting. I mean, they, 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 they come in and some of these kids are not, they don't have breakfast, they don't have lunch and, or if.
Well, we cover that.
Yeah. I, I know that's.
We had to work hard to get you, but all of our kids get free breakfast and lunch, we focus on, and that continues. Yep, that's still the case, and our teachers didn't leave that first summer. You know, when uh we asked them not to check out, we asked them to continue to get smarter and take courses and they did. I mean, Mr. Lundquist got a partnership with T Mobile that enabled us to get hotspots uh for every family that didn't have internet. Um his department and some of our students refurbished Chromebooks. So every kid in Stanton, didn't matter, had, had internet connectivity and every kid in every household had a device. So at least that helped us keep up, but you're totally right, that shutting the schools down, virtual learning was no comparison to in person, or it's not even close. Um and we don't ever intend to shut the schools down again, I, I hope everyone learned their lesson.
Yeah, and I think that it, it was proven, you know, post fact, it wasn't maybe the thing to do and.
Well, yeah.
The thing is about you, what was going on, and you can't, you know, you can't look back now. We know now that maybe it wasn't the best thing, but you know.
You always make the best decision you can with the information you have at the time.
And by the fact of having those hotspots, having the Chromebooks out there, that put us ahead of a lot of school divisions. Who then, when it hit and had, the order was shut down, they had no way of doing the, the virtual learning.
Yeah.
We already had it covered.
And just to kind of peel that back a little bit, what happened was, previous to me, an initiative had put in place to have one on one devices for every student at Stanton City Schools. And that sounds great for equity, right, on paper, until the children get home. And then some children can keep working and the other kids can't, so we said, well, that, that's not fair. You know, we, we, we have this initiative that we're trying to promote equity, but when the kids get home, it all disappears. So that's how we started on that initiative and um it was a little bit lucky, I'll be honest. All that stuff was just getting into place when the pandemic hit, but.
Yeah, the timing was incredible.
Well.
Well, kudos to the school board and the teachers and, and all of you for, for what we're hearing about how the kids are doing. The number one growth in the state, I mean, that's, that's quite an accomplishment, so.
Thank you.
Congratulations on that.
I'm curious too, it's what, how full is the high school?
So. It's better down a little bit.
Yeah, I haven't been over stand high.
You gotta go see your name on the plaque and everything else.
Well, I'm not worried about that.
But um, but, but um we kind of leveled out at about um eight thirty, eight forty right now. That was up higher at some points last year, so um, and we have, you know, one, it was about seven hundred, less than seven hundred and fifty students when we started. Twenty seven, eight twenty two, twenty seven is today. So um.
Overall here, overall enrollment. For the whole, the um school system, two thousand?
It's, no, it's twenty six fifty, not, not counting our preschool, which keeps growing every year. So if you added the preschool kids in, it'd be closer to twenty eight hundred.
Did, did COVID change the, the numbers that we could hold in the school or, or, you know, as far as, you know, uh social?
Social disaster, yeah, that's where we had to be very careful about it and alternate days.
And then the general, definitely mandated in person, it's actually five days a week and we were able to relax on some of those restrictions and get all the kids to.
Did you? At one time, we talked about maybe the city doing a growth study, is that still being concentrated? Is that still being concentrated?
Certainly looking to.
So that we know.
So the answer is that's ridiculous.
You know, do we need to start looking to the future? I mean, the current high school, I think the maximum was 900.
We had seven twenty.
We were almost there. Well, we're gaining some capacity at Shelburne. And if we needed to bring high school, uh, students over for CTE classes at Shelburne for part of the day, that's a possible solution. We could shuttle buses back and forth between periods. So we're gaining some capacity there. Um, and even if and when we're able to do a consolidated operations facility, we would, like, you know, plan to have a couple of classrooms there as well. Um, because our, you know, our students can do internships in food services or maintenance or instructional technology. So, um, we can offer those classes there too, so.
The numbers compared to, you said it's eight twenty seven as of today or whatever. So how does that compare to pre-pandemic before?
It was, when we started building, around seven fifty. And so what, a lot of, uh, what we see for the new enrollments at, at Stan High are coming from private replacements.
With the new school.
Okay.
And everything that we have to offer. You know, the coursework and the extracurriculars that we have to offer at our high school.
Quality of teachers.
Again, the quality of teachers for sure is, is better than my service.
They're seeing the results and they want their kids there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I realize the school board does not answer to the city council, but we've, we certainly appreciate the information and just, uh, being able to communicate with one another. Thank you so much. And I'm looking forward to continuing the conversation and having more joint discussions in the not-so-distant future.
We have the structures in place now, so I think that'll really help a lot. And, and also having the new operating agreement. Really takes all the guesswork out.
You know, one more very important question. So, um, Stanton High School football team is undefeated? We're going to stick.
The Marston fan is talking about the schedule for, uh, playoffs. Definitely getting those on the calendar.
Soon as, soon as Stanton High gets decent quarterback, they'll be. Walker will call me tonight.
If I love the leaving, I would trade you, but. He won't want to catch more, I promise you. Yeah.
We need a motion to adjourn or?
We're adjourned.
Thank you. Thank you all. Everybody. Appreciate it. Appreciate it.
Do you, all right, do you all want to keep going? Or do you want to go and take a break?
I can go.
Okay, all right, um, we're on break at this time and we will be back at 6:50. All right, on break.
Interesting stuff.
Yeah.
Bright bus shelter. It will not have light poles or lights. It will not have the charging stations. It will not have the conduit put in place or the wiring. Again, this is a B-Dot project. We have expressed our concerns to them. And we're at a point where we're trying to work out a way that maybe they can come up with that funding from some other source to make it happen. The initial location of the parking lot was in this general area. But we moved it closer to the roundabout because of the fact that it's such a large tract of land that's undeveloped. There's, you know, there are safety issues. And if you look at tonight, if that parking lot was in place tonight at this time, it would be very dark. So someone is safe. So we've got to find a way to get the lighting on that parking lot.
Mr. Vaughn, this is Brenda Me.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you anticipate that the project will disrupt traffic around the new restaurants and hotels at the Richmond Road entrance to it?
Not at all. They have to work within the temporary construction easement. So they'll be coming off the roundabout, probably staging in that gravel area on the top part of these slides. And the road will go in this general direction. They'll use that as initial staging. We have met with the contractor about maybe using some of the parking spaces or lots within Stanton Crossing to mobilize their equipment. We have instructed them that they will have to come off of North Frontier Drive to enter the area to do the construction. We do not want heavy truck traffic along for the entrance at the hotels. But again, I'm waiting to hear back from them whether or not they still want to use some space within Stanton Crossing. And then if they do, we'll have to take that before the EDA City Council as part of the agreement between the two bodies. Currently, now that we have the buildings down, the road is in process of being constructed. This year, we received $850,000 from the state to do the necessary due diligence. You'll see a list of reports and studies. And that also included the actual design work for the onsite water system, for water storage tank, for sewer line, force main, and a pump station. So this work is currently being done as part of that grant. And we have three local engineering firms that are working on that. That information was complete, which was slated to be done by September. I hope that by November. But the bulk of the information that they're generating, we're using to submit an application to the state for $12.2 million to do the actual installation of that infrastructure. Although we have it listed as infrastructure for Stanton Crossing, it truly, as Jeff knows, helps serve the eastern portion of the city with all the development that we have going on on Richmond Road.
Yeah, let me just put that the resiliency will help the entire water system across the entire city. So that's a big win.
This grant requires a 50% match. And we're coming up with that money in kind. And we're using the expenditures that the city has incurred, including the debt retirement on the note for Stanton Crossing. So the application, which was a very extensive application, was submitted around the end of September. So there's no local monies as part of that. So. The next step, we received the monies early this year for the due diligence. We've submitted the application. There are like four steps you have to move through. And at any point, the state will kick you out. We've made it through the pre-app, the full app. And now we have a virtual site tour with them October 25th. That's another key step. So many of the applications they're receiving are being kicked out of those various stages. So we're still in the game, which is very positive. We won't know until January, February, whether or not we receive funding, whether it's the full funding or any portion there of $12.2 million. If we don't receive the funding, then we'll take a different approach trying to install facilities as local revenues come online or as prospects or potential prospect will come into play. And depending on their investment, we would use revenues to then install a portion of the facilities, but not the entire network that we've outlined here. And again, with this grant, if we receive this, we install those infrastructure, it will move Stanton Crossing from a Tier Two to Tier Four, Tier Five status. Any questions? Just want to talk to you quickly about what's going on around the city. Cookout is coming.
Never heard of it.
Cookout is coming. It's a matter of the CEO determining when he wants to pull the trigger on that. I know Wayne's brought, might have one. They got a Popeyes first, or we got a Chipotle first.
Hopefully we win on that.
Of course, you know, Waltham Highs is under construction. They probably have three or four of the walls up right now. We have, what's the new car wash?
Wade's, Tidaway's.
Tidaway's is open. But want to announce that you see Zip's Car Wash.
Cleanest cars in the valley, Billy.
They came to one of our development reviews to talk about the potential project. That's not a given. But it's at the site close to where Starbucks is located, the vacant lot. And then Star Stone Tire Store, company came in for a developer review. They're looking at locating right next to the newest car wash that we have. So. Any questions?
In the Trader Joe's.
Okay, let's move on. Okay. Steam Plant, just want to talk a little bit about the Steam Plant project. That's been discussed for quite some time, but that is now coming online. And then they're walking through, just quickly, some of the projects that are going on at the Villages of Stanton. Hope you like my little, it's finally placed there for the roundabout. For the record, say that is not what the traffic circle will want. That's the only way we can get it coming under budget, just to do it that way. At Steam Plant, again, you saw the aerial of the plant itself. It was all part of the property that was purchased by Robert Miller. And it has been sold to Chip Clark. And they are applying for a industrial revitalization fund grant through DHCD, State Department of Housing and Development. They're used, those funds, if awarded, to do environmental and structural assessments, design and construction drawings, and perform a development for the project.
Where are they going to get the parking?
This is their parking. What is their parking there? A portion of this property through here.
It's not going to be a lot of parking.
And then they have some area for parking on the other side.
Yeah, you got about eight spaces, I think, on the other side.
Here are some renderings that they put together. You can see River of Trussells there, where the parking would be, the center of the building. They plan to use that side drive, as you can see. He has been working to get control of that from, I can see his ex, for quite some time. And there's just been fighting back and forth about how much.
I looked at that property and the biggest, you couldn't, CSX didn't want to do anything. Didn't want you to even come near those pylons underneath it.
Yeah, so he's getting closer to getting control of that. But again, he is applying for IRF grant. And I said it's due November the 4th. No match required, so no cost to the city. And I've discussed with him, if awarded, you know, there would be some staff time for assisting him with administering the grant. But.
Just for the record, your illustration, you have the light going downward. I'm sure our dark skies will appreciate that.
It looks beautiful.
It looks amazing.
What are they going to put there?
That's my next question, what is going to go in there, Steam Plant?
Olive Garden. He has not shared it with me. He's, it'll be a restaurant of some type. And there are other drawings and concepts, but I just didn't have time to include those in the presentation. But I'm not aware of who would be, what company or restaurant would be under. The other one is Villages, Robin Miller. Of course, purchased and has been renovating the site. There's a spa. And the site that I want to focus on is right behind that. And here's a conceptual layout, showing the new road, existing building, which is a former utility shed that they're renovating. And then they're constructing a new building right here. So.
Council needs to do a site visit at the spa.
Here is the former utility shed. And it's a, my notes here. He's doing 20 apartments in this building. And those are just model apartments, studio apartments. But he's doing 20 units. It's approximately a $3 million investment. It really looks nice. Which I had before pictures of, but he's done a great job with this. This is the first new building constructed at the Villages. And this one will also have 20 apartments in it. And it's kind of a $3 million project as well. He's hoping that both of them will be completed and opened sometime this year.
Maybe like an island?
I think they'll probably be somewhere comparable to what's currently there. What's the other building's name?
Lofts.
The Lofts, I think, yeah. Yeah, I think it's more like Lofts, probably. This building, right here. And of course, he and his partners purchased, he and Robin Miller purchased Stanton Steam Laundry. And they're planning on renovating that. It's 29,000 square foot building. Phase one is this dark area on the plan, which is this corner right here. And I believe this is Hampton Street, and then that's Hall Street. But they're doing $6.6 million project. 20 apartments in this building, which is on the left, on the bottom, and then on the right, this is Hall Street. And they would, there would be an additional 20 apartments in that portion of the building. Knowing what he's done in the past, I'm sure the apartments will be nice.
I'm going to do the traffic in that area.
Haven't talked about that.
Are they going across Hampton Street?
There is a building that is across Hampton Street.
But are they going to develop it?
He doesn't know at this point. If he can find a tenant, he might end up renting it. But just not sure at this point. Okay, any other questions? There's been a lot of discussion and talk about the fact that there's been so much emphasis on Richmond Avenue by the city and kind of forgot the other corridors and some of the other corridors is, you know, not as developed as Richmond Avenue. And that's not true. I was approached by a reporter not too long ago about that. And so we decided that we would take a look at the business activity along West Beverly Street, Greenville Avenue, and Richmond Road. And Amanda did a lot of the legwork of going through Google Maps, going through street views, and listing all the businesses on each of those corridors. And then yesterday, we did a windshield survey verifying the businesses. So with that in mind, I think we provided to you and even to Carolyn and Brenda a sheet of the amount of activity on each of the corridors. And my first question to you, which corridor has the largest number of businesses? I just. Yes. It's Greenville Avenue. 106 for Greenville Avenue. 106, 92 for Richmond Road, and 62 for West Beverly Street. And when we say the corridor, we looked at those businesses that fronted on the street or had access from that, direct access from that corridor.
Yeah, because they only have 85 businesses in the West End, so therefore.
Okay, second question. Service oriented. We have a large number of service oriented businesses.
That would be much better. Yeah, I would think that would be much better.
Greenville Avenue. West Beverly's second, Richmond Road's third.
Isn't that what we said?
Okay, so.
So 30, 49, and 27. West Beverly's 30.
I have Richmond's third.
49. So percentage wise, the percentage of the total number of businesses, what percent are service sector for each individual corridor? Like West Beverly Street, what percentage of the businesses are? No, 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 no.
48.
48. 47. Richmond Road, 29. Total number of retail businesses, who has the largest number?
Greenville. I'll say Rich.
Who said Greenville? You're wrong.
Wait, you said Greenville Town? Define retail.
Sales.
Oh, sale, okay.
Okay. And then the percentage of retail for each of the corridors. West Beverly, what percentage of West Beverly?
I had 30.
30.
34. Greenville Avenue.
36.
30. And Richmond Road, 36. And this gives you an idea. So it displays the percent.
I didn't get them.
Go back to four again, Billy. 21, 32, 33.
Is that order?
Yes, sir.
That's it.
Oh, I got the bonus, I thank you.
So I'm just saying, I drove, the other night I drove Greenville Avenue. And then we went out yesterday. And I found maybe one location in the former, call it Kmart, but Super Shute. There was a vacant spot there. And I don't believe I saw a building that was vacant. No, keep in mind, the mall is not in the city. So we're stopping at CVS. And I drove, we drove, I drove the other night by myself, but then we drove yesterday. Not a vacant building.
Really?
Because the ones that were vacant are full now, they, you know, like.
Even the Habitat is doing well. They expanded downstairs, the basement.
That happened a lot after the mall shut down, so most businesses migrated.
You have some that have come into the city, yes. So Greenville Avenue is not dying, or the city has forgotten.
I think the private sector is doing a very good job. What about Wendy's, oh really?
Dunkin' Donuts.
Dunkin' Donuts. So that is vacant right now, but Dunkin' Donuts is moving in there.
Are they going to, so they're going to shut down the little Dunkin' there on?
I don't know. I don't know at all.
I mean, donut, she can eat more than one donut. We need a Krispy Kreme, we don't need Dunkin' Donuts.
Okay. And what time is it? I just showed you the number of businesses by category, by type, by corridor. Okay, so I shouldn't have shown that.
It was not, it was Richmond. It was Richmond.
I would have thought West Beverly.
So you got it wrong. Okay, did anyone get that right?
Go back to that. It's 445, it's really close.
We should have asked the question, which two corridors are tied with the number of gas stations? So did anyone get all of them right? Get half of them right?
I got one right.
I got two of them.
I have more respect for the West End than what the city of Stanton wants to give it.
Right.
We have a gift, and it's under $25. Don't claim it, okay?
Is it an empty bag?
Yeah.
It's an empty bag.
Something from our closet upstairs, storage. But since we don't have, do we have a clear winner? Anyone like the?
I got, I mean, I don't know what you're counting. If you're counting by just the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, I got three of them right.
You got three right.
When Carolyn gets it.
Did anyone else get three right?
Nope, I didn't.
All right, Carolyn.
But on the bottom, it says it could be present to win.
I'm not worried.
Come by the office, and we'll leave it here. We'll leave with less. You want to see what it is?
Carolyn, that's, as you stated earlier, that's from your more than 70 years here.
That's right. I've been watching those three rows.
Now, there's something in it. You put water in, something grows. I'm not telling you what it is, though.
Is it a chia pet?
So there you go, Carolyn.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I tell you what, I'll put it on my desk. You'll come see me in order to get it, okay?
Okay, I hope it doesn't start growing on your desk, waiting on me.
That's all that I have, so these.
All right, thank you, we're on. Now, we're running over time, so thank you very much for the presentation and the trivia, that was fun.
That was fun.
Roll call.
I got one, but I don't know where it is. You didn't come back.
I did not have anything.
Sit right back to you.
Carolyn, do you have any thing for roll call?
I got nothing.
Brenda?
I was wondering if we could get a status on entrance overlay, over, sorry, entrance corridor overlay review.
Sure, so the last update I sent out, which I think was a few weeks ago, was that we're expected to get a draft of the report from the Frazers soon, and I'll check with Rodney to see if that's actually happened. Do you know, Billy? It has not happened. So we're waiting on the draft from them, and then staff will begin working, reviewing that. I'm happy to send that email again, but bottom line is, it will come before council after the first of the year, once staff has a chance to review everything and to put kind of a final product in place.
Right, any, another question is, do you have any report on the numbers for mischief and magic?
I don't. I think we can try to figure that out. It's a lot. Does the police department do a fudge, the drone?
We did. The problem with that is people come in and out constantly, so it's very hard to get it judged. They're not all there at one moment. No, it looked like they were all there.
As you can see, all that estimation back during the Saturdays, when it went to 104,000.
Did you notice? It always increased every year. We went out and counted parking spots of these, because the mall filled up by about 11 o'clock.
It was amazing how full it was.
Went out and counted those. Again, that also, there's turnover there eventually.
Right.
Based on that, and some of the conversations we had with Quicks on their number of bus runs, I think 12:13 on Saturday. And then, you know, Sunday wasn't quite as busy, but it was probably six or seven.
And they didn't do Friday this year, right?
Not officially. Not officially. It was hopping with Friday.
But there were almost 1,000 spots out there at the mall.
Yes.
And then you figure three, three people per car, and it was early in the day, I would find.
I mean, you know, objectively, I'm not sure a lot of numbers, subjectively, success. So I just kind of leave it at that.
I have a question for roll call. Sort of Christmas decorations, holiday decorations for the West End.
For the West End.
So we did locate the banner that was used last year, and so it's in good shape, that's what I've been told. And then we were thinking about putting some kind of wreaths, you know, adding some embellishments to it with some wreaths and things like that. So we're working on that, but that's our idea at this moment in time, so.
Thank you. All right, with that. Oh, you found it, I'm sorry, go ahead.
All right, so in a recent West End Business Candidate Form, a recommendation was advanced to utilize empty and seemingly abandoned properties along the West Beverly Street corridor. In addition to the obvious Chestnut Hills property, the parking lot where we were all parked beside Marcus Memorial Church at the corner of West Bevan Hayes Avenue has a building that has not been utilized in years. The Newton Bakery site is now open. The house beside the car lot in the 1900 block of West Beverly that we re-sown here at City Council several months ago, it has not been demolished or utilized by the car lot beside it. As a matter of fact, today it had a "For Sale" sign on it. So I, I'm just, this all came to mind because of the form, and they brought up the fact that, you know, are we doing anything from a tax status to investigate these properties and to, you know, start getting them into condemned status if they haven't paid their tax in four or five years and nobody's been there? And so I don't think we have been updated by Rick Johnson, our city treasurer, this year. And could we possibly get an update soon on West Beverly properties in particular? And any other Stanton property that is four or more years taxed delay. And I mean, you know, I know you're not going to have the answer to any of that, but.
I will definitely talk to Mr. Johnson, and we will, I'll find out how much time it would take for him to get that information pulled together. And then I'll let you all know in terms of the timeline of when he can come in and provide a report. So happy to do that.
Thank you. The work session meeting is now adjourned. We will be back at 7:30 for the regular meeting for Stanton City Council.
Thanks, everyone.
As Mayor of the City of Stanton, I call the October 13th, 2022 Stanton City Council Regular Meeting to Order. The first item is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would like to join me for the pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so tonight's invocation, Moment of Silence, will be done by yours truly. This will be a Christian invocation that's allowed by the United States Supreme Court. And I have to give my disclaimer. If you'd like to join me, feel free. If you would not, no pressure at all. If you would please bow your heads, if you would care to do so. O Lord, please instruct us and teach us in the way that we should conduct this meeting. Please counsel us with your loving eyes on us. Let our aims in this meeting be aligned with your direction. Let our plans be orchestrated by you. Father, let your will be done in this meeting so that this can be a meeting that is based upon your desires for us. Whatever it is that you want as a result from this meeting, Lord, let it happen. We place this meeting in your hands, your most holy name, Jesus. We place this meeting in your hands, your most holy name, Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
All right. The next item is the mayor's report. All right. I have quite a few items. I've been very busy, and I may end up missing a few. If I do, I apologize. Let's see here. So I attended the SDDA annual celebration, and I was able to read the Small Business Saturday proclamation at their celebration. Uh, that was, um, well-attended, and it was, it was delightful. And Ms. Bow regard, you were in attendance as well. Um, I attended the DEI commission meeting in which Anna Levitt with CATSA, the community action partnership for Stanton, Augusta County, and Waynesboro, as well as Dan Lehman with the Community Foundation presented. They provided a lot of, uh, great information to the DEI commission concerning, um, all the duties of our outside agencies. I attended the Shenandoah Valley Workfor, Shenandoah Valley Workforce Board meeting in Harrisonburg this morning, and the focus, uh, for the meeting this morning was concerning, uh, youth in our workforce. I attended the VML Mayor's Institute. I attended the VML conference, uh, where I served on the nominations committee. We voted on the new slate of officers for the VML Executive Board, and the county towns and, um, count, um, cities sections as a slate. We also voted on the legislative agenda for Stanton. Uh, Leslie Bow regard was in attendance at the VML conference along with Counselor Carolyn Dole and Counselor Brenda Mead. I attended the Queen City Mischief and Magic Festival, which was a lot of fun, thoroughly enjoyed it. And it was a lot of people, and I thoroughly enjoyed seeing all the folks visiting, um, our beautiful city. What else? Uh, Ms. Bow regard and myself attended the Greater Augusta Chamber of Commerce Leadership School that was held at, um, the Government Center in Verona. Uh, Tim Fitzgerald was also in attendance along with Mike Hemp. The four of us spoke to the leadership class, and we answered questions concerning, um, municipality governments and how they run, and what it's like to serve as an elected official, and what it's like to serve as a interim city manager, city manager, and county administrator. And I think that's about it. So are there any additional items by members of council?
This is Carolyn Dole. I just have a question. Where, where is Ms. Mead? She, I don't see her on the, um,
Amen. She probably just went right through the back.
She's right here.
Oh, okay.
All right, um, moving on to the approval of minutes, I will entertain a motion for the work session and regular meeting of September twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two.
Mayor Oaks.
Counselor Holmes.
I move to approve the, uh, the agenda, the regular meeting agenda as presented.
Uh, the minutes?
Yeah, minutes. I'm sorry.
All right, for the work session and regular meeting of September twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two. All righty, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, Counselor Claffey is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to approve the special meeting minutes of September twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two. Just say so moved, if you want.
All right, Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes of the special meeting from the twenty-eighth.
All right. So the special meeting of September twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two has a motion on the floor by Counselor Claffey. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Vice Mayor Robertson is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. I would like to, uh, point out to everyone this evening that we have Morgan Smith filling in as our temporary, uh, clerk of council, so thank you very much. We appreciate your assistance. That takes us on to the regular meeting. And we have item A, a public hearing in consideration of a request by Michael A. Beck to rezone four twenty-five Bridge Street from I-two heavy industrial district to R-three medium-density residential district. Ms. Bow regard.
Uh, Rodney Rhodes, our senior planner, will walk us through this item this evening.
Thank you, Mayor Oaks, city council members. As the mayor noted in the introduction, this is a request to rezone four twenty-five Bridge Street from I-two heavy industrial district to R-three medium-density residential district in order to reestablish residential use of this property. The property has been utilized for residential purposes dating back to at least nineteen-twenty-four, so about a hundred years ago. Um, however, when the property, when, when the city went through a rezoning, um, of entire city and a rewrite of the zoning ordinance back in nineteen-sixty-nine, this property was zoned I-two heavy industrial due to the uses behind it being industrial. Um, and this property has been vacant since twenty-fifteen, and as council notes that, um, once a property is, uh, not, a legally non-conforming property is no longer utilized for that purpose for more than two years, it loses its legal non-conforming status, and therefore, the only thing that can go on this property in I-two is something that's allowed in the industrial district. Residential is not one of those uses. Mr. Beck is the new owner of the property, and, um, he would like to reestablish this for residential purposes, and therefore, he is a, uh, he'd like to renovate the home, and, um, therefore, he is applying for this rezoning. It's a downzoning. If you look at this, um, you, you would say, well, this is spot zoning. Everything behind it is industrial. Everything beside it is industrial. This is spot zoning. You should not approve spot zoning. However, this is a little unusual. It's been a house for a century. This is part of the city that, um, that the staff would like to revisit and consider a rezoning, uh, a mass rezoning like we've done in other parts of the city, um, and we probably will take that under, um, start that process this coming spring. However, we do not want to delay the applicant and his, uh, pursuit of renovating this property. Therefore, we are recommending approval of this, uh, with understanding that we will be looking at the entire area, um, later on as far as a potential rezoning to a more appropriate, um, district. Uh, the planning commission conducted a public hearing on this on September fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two, and no one spoke in opposition to it, and on a five-to-zero vote, the planning commission unanimously recommended approval of this rezoning. I'd be glad to take any questions that council has at this time or after the public hearing.
Counselor Claffey.
Isn't the adjoining properties both residential?
They, they both appear to be residential, yes, sir, but they are also zoned industrial.
I understand that.
And, and we would have liked to have done them all as a group, but we couldn't make contact with those property owners quick enough, and we didn't want to delay the applicant.
That's fine.
Any additional questions? All right. Yeah, if you would like to go ahead and speak before we start the public hearing.
All right, yeah. First, thank you very much. I appreciate that kind of setup. Um, so, yeah, I'm Michael Beck. I'm a, would like to be a new resident to Stanton. So, um, I came across this property, um, looking for a semihistoric property. From what I can tell, the records show it was built in eighteen-eighty-eight, um, originally. And it's, from what I can tell from inside, it's been a single-family home since that time, and I would like to keep that history within the property and fix it up. If you've been on Bridge Street before, you've seen it's the house with the porch falling down. So I would like to beautify it a little bit and kind of fix it up, and my, myself, I would like to live in it. So just an extra note there. So thank you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Beck?
Mr. Beck, I just want to congratulate you. You're a brave man.
Yes, appreciate it. Yeah, it's, it's a unique challenge, but I've, I've been looking forward to it for a while, so.
Be careful of that front porch out there.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, it's, as soon as, if it gets approved, uh, yeah, that's going to be one of the first things to kind of get that back up to, to safety standards, so.
So, Rodney, so I, are there people, I, I don't know, are they living in the homes on either side of Mr. Beck's property?
Mr. Beck can answer that better than I can. So four twenty-seven, which would be the property directly adjacent towards Millbrook, um, is occupied currently.
And they're, they're zoned industrial, heavy?
Yeah, yeah. From what I can tell, same zoning.
Because of the railroad there.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, um, we're going to have a public hearing and then a consideration of this request. So I'm going to read the public hearing guidelines. In a moment, I will open up the public hearing. It is a time that council sets aside to hear from citizens and others about a specific topic. We ask that you please give your name, your address, and then keep your remarks at five minutes or less. When you reach the five-minute time limit, I will let you know that your time limit has expired. For our Zoom participants, please raise your hand now if you wish to speak on this particular public hearing. If you raise your hand during this public hearing, you will also be able to raise your hand during this council meeting for the other public hearings and matters from the public, and please keep your comments to five minutes as well. Once everyone who wishes to speak has had an opportunity, I will then close the public hearing. I will now open the public hearing, so if you wish to speak, please approach the podium, and we'll alternate between individuals physically present and those that have their hands raised via the Zoom platform. So I'll hit the, um, gavel. That'll open up the public hearing. We'll start with the audience in person, and then we'll alternate between Zoom and the audience. And then when I hit the gavel a second time, that'll close the public hearing, and feel free to speak either for or against. Public hearing is now open. Would anyone care to address the council? Come on up, Mr. Fossa.
I'm getting older, older and older, and I'm getting nastier and nastier and nastier. And I see a lot of things that happened in Charlottesville and Richmond and so forth, and it shakes me to no end. Stanton is a beautiful city. It should remain a residential city as much as is possible, and therefore, I would hope that you would approve the residential use of this property. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Smith, does anyone have their hands raised?
I have no one with their hands raised.
Would anyone from the audience care to address the council? Welcome.
Hi there, Michelle Edwards. I live at one-twelve Bell Creek Drive. Um, about a year ago, my husband and I were considering downsizing. We were trying to look for a house. Our kids were grown, and we, I actually thought of that house, and I thought, wow, if I were only thirty years younger, um, I could probably take that project on. So thank you very much for, for doing that for me. Um, I think it's terrific that the city will consider rezoning options to allow more people to live in, in homes uh, that they can upgrade, and especially historic homes that can do nothing but really uplift the neighborhood. And it will be wonderful to watch that happen, and I think he could set, um, a real example on Bridge Street for others to do the same. So I speak in favor of your proposal. Thank you for doing it.
Thank you. Is there anyone with their hand raised?
I have no one with their hands raised.
Welcome.
I'm Barbara Lee, nine oh four Rockways Street, Stanton, and I want to say to you, I admire you. We're going in tackling a building eighteen-hundred. I'm going to watch you do this.
Maybe you can sell tickets.
All right. With that, the public hearing is now closed. I'll entertain a motion.
This is Carolyn Dole.
Counselor Darby.
I move that council adopt the ordinance and approve the rezoning as recommended by the planning commission.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I second it, Terry Holmes.
All right, we have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Congratulations.
Good luck.
Good luck.
That takes us to the second item, item B, which is also a public hearing in consideration of amendments to Title eighteen zoning and Title seventeen subdivision to reflect the proper title of the administrative officer. Ms. Bow regard.
Rodney Rhodes is also going to introduce this item.
Welcome back.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, city council members. I consider these amendments to be housecleaning amendments. Uh, the state code, uh, notes that the council shall, um, direct someone, appoint someone as the zoning administrator and subdivision agent for the city, um, and that this person may have a different title than that and have additional duties other than that. And the past in, in Stanton, it's, at one time, it was the building official was the zoning administrator. At one time, I think it was the, uh, director of planning and inspections was the zoning administrator. However, the zoning ordinance should only reference the zoning administrator, not a different city position. Um, and, and likewise, in the subdivision ordinance, it should, um, uh, address, um, a subdivision agent, not some other title. Um, therefore, we are proposing these amendments to, to rectify that. Um, I would note that, um, and if these, if amendments are, uh, adopted by council, there are two additional items for council's consideration, and that's the actual appointment of a zoning administrator and of a subdivision agent, so there's additional motions for your consideration there. Uh, I'd be glad to take any questions you have at this time or after the public hearing. Um, the planning commission conducted a public hearing last month, and no one spoke in opposition to it.
Are there any questions by council members? All right, hearing none, um, same process. I'll hit the gavel. Um, you can please come to the podium, speak for or against, and we'll alternate between folks here in person and the Zoom. I'll hit the gavel a second time, and that'll close the public hearing out, and this is concerning, uh, the proper title of the administrative officer. With that, the public hearing is now open. Would anyone care to address the council? All right. Ms. Smith, does anyone have their hand raised?
I have no one with their hands raised.
All right. Anyone? With that, the public hearing is now closed. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
I move that council adopt the ordinance and approve the amendments as recommended by the planning commission as presented.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I second it. This is Terry Holmes.
All right, we have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Mr. Rhodes, I think you can go home now.
Well, Mayor Oaks.
You said you had more, yeah.
Two additional motions and appointments, and, and we did, in the briefing, uh, recommend that your point Rodney Rhodes is the zoning administrator and Tim Hartless is a subdivision agent. However, if there's anyone else on city staff that would like to step up to those roles and can be, uh, considered by city council, Jeff Johnson over there, or Leslie Bow regard?
Mr. Blair?
Mr. Blair?
Mr. Rhodes, I'm retiring soon, and I might be interested in a part-time job.
I don't think either one of these are part-time.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
Can we read, do they have to be read separately? Can we read both of those at the same time and take them out at one time? The appointment of Mr. Rhodes and Mr. Hartless.
Uh, you can read them both at the same time.
Okay.
I'll entertain a motion.
This is Carolyn Dole.
Counsel, Counselor Dole?
I move that council appoint Rodney Rhodes as the zoning administrator for the city of Stanton invested with the powers and authorities pursuant to Virginia Code section fifteen-point-two dash twenty-two eighty-six and Stanton City Code section eighteen-point-one ninety-five-point-zero-one-zero, as well as, uh, appointing Timothy Hartless as a subdivision agent for the city of Stanton invested with the powers and authorities pursuant to Virginia Code sections fifteen-point-two dash twenty-two fifty-five and fifteen-point-two dash twenty-two fifty-eight and Stanton City Code section seventeen-point-one-zero-point-zero-seven-zero.
Good golly, Mr. Blair. Now, that was quite a motion. Thank you very much. So there's a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Madam Mayor, I'll second it.
All right, Counselor Claffey has second. Any further discussion?
This is Carolyn Dole.
Counselor Dole.
I, I would be open to anyone wishing to amend, uh, this motion to I would be open to anyone wishing to amend this motion to replace the two nominees with Jeff Johnson and John Blair.
Any consideration?
That would not be a friendly amendment.
All right, Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Mr. Claffey?
Aye.
Ms. Stell?
Aye.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Mayor Oaks?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Mr. Rhodes, you had your opportunity. You could have ran when I gave you that opportunity, but now you can go home with additional responsibilities. So thank you.
Blue titles at any rate.
Thank you. All right, that takes us on to item C, a consideration of ordinance to amend the FY 2023 budget ordinance for the city of Stanton by adding budget amendment number two, school portion only. Ms. Byregard.
So Jesse Myers, who is now simply the chief financial officer, is here to present.
Congratulations.
Thanks so much. Tonight, I'm bringing you the school portion of budget amendment number two. It was originally introduced September 8th. We held a public hearing that same night. The city portion was approved at the September 22nd meeting. The entire school portion is $7.2 million, but it's $3.6 million that has to be appropriated twice. I just want to make that clear. It comes out of the school's education fund balance carryover, and it's going to be put into the school's CIP fund. They have designated the following items for this $3.6 million. It is $50,000 for the school bus replacement reserve, $50,000 for their furniture and fixture reserve, $50,000 set aside for their technology reserve, $100,000 for their parking lot and roadway repair reserve, $200,000 for vehicle replacement reserves, $250,000 for CTE classroom equipment, $400,000 for a boiler replacement at Dixon. They said that could be done this year or it might be pushed out until next year. $1 million for outside agency obligation and $1.5 million for the Shelburne Middle School Operations Facility project. The interim city manager recommends the ordinance be passed as it's presented.
Great, are there any questions? All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
I move to approve the school portion of the ordinance amending the fiscal year 2023 budget by adding budget amendment number two totaling $7,200,000.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
A second. It is Terry Holmes.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Smith, please call the roll.
Mayor Oaks?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Stell?
Aye.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Mr. Claffey?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I'm sure the school board will be pleased. That takes us to matters from the interim city manager. Ms. Byregard.
I have one item this evening. The city of Stanton's Planning Division is holding a public forum on bicycle infrastructure planned along Churchville Avenue. And if you recall, the last meeting, we had a report about this. So this is going to be a public forum related to that, those plans. The event is Tuesday, October 25th at 6:00 PM in the Gypsy Hill Park Gymnasium, which is on Regimental Road. Just to briefly summarize, the city has contracted with the Timmins Group to design bicycle infrastructure along Churchville Avenue in accordance to Stanton Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan. And representatives from the Timmins Group, of the Timmins Group, will be there to present the information on the proposed infrastructure improvements and receive public comments on the changes to Churchville Avenue. On a side note, I'm going to say this is not one of those projects that we're going to listen to the public about and not have any funds for. This does have funds. So this has a budget. We've included for several years now funding in the CIP for this plan. So that's very exciting. So please come out on the 25th to provide, to hear more about this plan and to provide your input. So that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. That takes us to matters from the public. Matters from the public. This part of city council's agenda is entitled Matters from the Public. It is a time that council sets aside to hear from citizens and others about a wide variety of subjects. A copy of the Stanton City Council's Matters from the Public rules are available in paper form at the clerk's desk and online on the city of Stanton's webpage. You are asked to familiarize yourself with those rules before commenting. Please come to the podium or begin your call, identify yourself, and complete your remarks within five minutes. With that, Matters from the Public is now open. Would anyone care to address the council? Welcome.
Good evening. First of all, my name is Dave Copper, other than Stanton and Ridgeway Drive up the hill. I would first like to acknowledge the Monachian Indian Nation and the Anahoga Peoples, an ancestral land on which I reside, commonly called Stanton, Virginia. Good evening, Madam Mayor, and all of council gentlemen and council gentlemen. I hope this finds you and yours all doing well and in good health. I'd like to start with a few historic statements and facts. The early Revolutionary War was not progressing well for the colonists who hoped for independence from Great Britain. A patriot by the name of Thomas Paine wrote these words from a pamphlet called "The American Crisis." "These are the times that try men's souls." For it now, it would also include women, I'm sure. He goes on. "The summer soldier and the sunshine patriot will, in this crisis, shrink from the service of his country. But he that stands it now deserves the love and thanks of man and woman." Not too long after the distribution of this pamphlet and being a long, long time ago, of course, the word didn't get out right away. But after a little bit of time, the colonists won the Battle of Trenton in that daring Christmas crossing of the Delaware River by General Washington and the troops. That happens to be my hometown. I'm just saying that. I am a longtime resident of Stanton. And not a week after that, the battle, they won the Battle of Princeton, you know, soundly beating the British, which is a short distance from Trenton. And here we stand in 2022. "These are the times that try men's and women's souls." An article from the Stanton Leader dated 10/9 this year reads, "You drive to your polling location, assuming you have a car, and present yourself to the official on site. They proceed to ask for your proof of payment for poll taxes from the previous three years. You then must complete a literacy test where you demonstrate an accurate comprehension of Virginia's Constitution." Oh, wait, we meant Election Day in the early 1900s. Barriers for black voters, like poll taxes, immediately affected voter turnout in Virginia. Some 88,000 fewer voters took part in the 1905 gubernatorial election in comparison to the 1901 election, according to the Virginia Museum of History and Culture. Virginia was among the last five states in the U.S. to remove poll taxes in 1966, well after President Lyndon Johnson signed the Voting Rights Act and the Civil Rights Act into law. And this is just a glimpse of the roadblocks black Virginia residents have faced to vote. And I might add, black women weren't allowed to vote until 1965. All right. Oh, I did read that. Okay. Okay, got that. And I read all that to do this, I'd like to introduce a resolution for the city council of Stanton, Virginia, committing to the core principles of democracy. Whereas the Stanton City Council recognizes that the foundation of the United States of America rests firmly upon the principle of the rule of law, holding that all persons, institutions, and entities are equally protected by and accountable to the law and. Whereas the Stanton City Council holds that the peaceful transfer of power established during the inauguration of President Thomas Jefferson.
Your time is up.
Five minutes already?
It already is.
What?
We'll take a copy of that, though.
Okay. Your clock's real.
Thank you. We'll take a look. Thank you. All right, Ms. Smith, does anyone have their hands raised?
I have no one with their hands raised.
Would anyone else care to address the council? Welcome back.
Thank you. My name is Albino Albert Fossa. I live at 401 Bowling Street, right next to the railroad, within 13 feet. At one time, I was told by the real estate assessor that it doesn't matter, that location, location, location with respect to real estate doesn't count. That inflation doesn't count. I don't know what school he went to, but he's way out of line. That's neither here, and I've been going this route for about over a year now, and no response. So I have to picket. That's the only response I have. I can hire a lawyer. I have the funds for it and so forth, but it's just a waste of money. So be it. Secondly, I bought a piece of property out in Dome's Crossing. There was a cabin there. And this cabin had three bedrooms, two bathrooms, a laundry room. And it sat on one, on over one and a half acres. Can you remember those three things? One and a half acres. The building also had a root cellar under it. The pump failed. The root cellar became filled with water, and it destroyed the house. Became very dangerous, and I had it removed. I never realized that it had a root cellar under it. I now go and I want to redo the property. I want to put back three bedrooms, two bathrooms, a laundry room, with the kitchen and the other things that go with it. I was denied that. They tell me that it's only zoned for only one bedroom, one bedroom. I said, when was that put in? I went to Augusta County. And I asked them about it. They knew nothing about it being zoned for one bedroom. It goes all the way back to 1982. They were in the dark, just like I'm in the dark, but they stand by. They're angry at me, and they lie, they deceive, and they stalk me. I went to see Mr. Day, who was the person responsible for supposedly writing the notes down. And he just struck his shoulder. I said, you're going to dislocate your shoulder, mister, if you keep that up. Did you or didn't you? He wouldn't answer. A month later, Mr. Day packs up and leaves for Naples, Florida, just like that. He sells his $375,000 house, just like that. He's gone. I've picketed the governor's office. I've picketed the health department down there. No response, no response, no positive constructive response. Why? What is the problem here? 20 years ago, a little more than 20 years ago, I beat the pants off of the health department. They had a man who was as crooked as crooked can be and who's been, had his pockets filled by none other than Charlie Hunter. And Charlie Hunter never said, I can't, I'm not going to college because I have enough money that I can buy judges, I can buy legislatures, and so forth. And they didn't like that, but they gave me a variance for my facility. But then again, went to the commissioner of revenue at Augusta County. She took away my licenses without authorization, without authority. Where did she get the nerve to do that? Charlie Hunter had a ton of money, a ton of money, $100 million or more. And he was able to buy positions. Now, you people give something like over 300, somewheres in the neighborhood of 300 and $1,000 to this health department here in Stanton.
Your time is up.
I know. I'm sorry.
Thank you. You're fine. Thank you.
I think you should think about what's going on.
Do we have anyone with their hands raised?
I have no one with their hands raised.
Would anyone else care to address the council? Hey, welcome.
I'm Nish Narduzi, South Jefferson Street. I'm coming here tonight to plead with you to listen to this message from my heart that is not political, surprisingly. So I'm going to start with a scripture from James. "What good is it, my brothers, if someone says he has faith but does not have works? Can that faith save him? If a brother or sister is poorly clothed or lacking in daily food, and one of you says to them, 'Go in peace, be warmed and filled,' without giving them the things needed for the body, what good is that? So also, faith by itself, if it does not have works, is dead." Keep that in mind. I am your liaison to Valley Community Services Board. I'm not here in a capacity with their authority to speak on behalf of them. I am just reporting back to you what I've seen their needs are. So Valley Community Services Board ARPA funds for a clubhouse for ID and DD, so Intellectual and Developmental Disability Community members. It was supposed to start in April when COVID hit and it got shut down. They need the ARPA funds right now so that they can start that program up again. It only needs a minimal amount of startup funds and then can be financially sustainable on its own within three to six months. So $124,000. Do it. Find a building for Valley CSD to utilize for their upcoming crisis stabilization program. It's a six-year project that's been in the works. They finally now can make something happen. They need a building, 30,000 to 40,000 square feet, no asbestos, some other stipulations. Work with them, figure out how to find that location. You may want to ask Augusta County why they are the only municipality that consistently does not provide the mandated 10% of funding that other municipalities like us, Stanton, pays for every year. Augusta County does not. Just so you know, when the Crisis Stabilization Unit comes up and it's for the Marcus Alert Program, Augusta County is the only one that's mandated to put something into the works because they have the population that requires them to do that. They're still not paying their 10%, although Valley Community Services Board has to serve that need. So we're paying for Augusta County. Figure out how to provide services to our disabled and elderly neighbors living in the C Street apartment complex. They're out there on their own. They need a lot of services. I would really like for any of you to reach out to me. Let's take a visit there. Let's meet those residents, see what they need. I deal with mothers all the time that are living on the streets. They're unhoused, or maybe their house, but their sons are not. And it's breaking their hearts because they have to lock the door and ignore when their sons are knocking to come in because they have protective orders or they have schizophrenia or they have habeas corpuses on them, so they're going to go to jail. So the mothers have to hide in the back rooms and not answer the door for their sons. I want our city to immediately, right now, work with partners in our community wanting to set up a low barrier, low barrier, cold weather shelter. That means no stipulations that will keep anybody out in the cold so that I don't have to see. to see another transgender member of our community freeze to death on the streets outside of the mission. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone with their hands raised?
I have no one with their hands raised.
Would anyone else from the audience care to address the council? All right, hearing none, I call the regular meeting of October 13, 2022 adjourned.